Good evening, night number two of our special meetings. Let's stand together, take our songbooks to song number 34. Song 34, "How Great Thou Art." Think of the words, we'll lift up our voices on that first verse, "Oh Lord my God." Song number 34. "Oh Lord my God, when I in awesome wonder, Consider all the worlds Thy hands have made. I see the stars, I hear the rolling thunder; Thy power throughout the universe displayed. Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art! Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art! When through the woods and forest glades I wander, And hear the birds sing sweetly in the trees. When I look down from lofty mountain grandeur, And hear the brook and feel the gentle breeze. Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art! Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art!" Think of the words on the third. "And when I think that God His Son not sparing, Send him to die, I scarce can take it in; That on the cross my burden gladly bearing, He bled and died to take away my sin." Sing it like you mean it! "Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art! Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art! When Christ shall come, wish out of acclamation, And take me home, what joy shall fill my heart! Then I shall bow in humble adoration, And there proclaim, 'My God, how great Thou art!' Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art! Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to Thee; How great Thou art, how great Thou art!"
Well, the IC really gets me, alright? Glad to see you out tonight. Listen, here's, you can save the church a lot of money, okay? You really can. Brother Hightower loves chocolate chip cookies. The more chocolate chip cookies he gets, the less offering we have to give. So ladies, and I don't want to mention any names, but if you want to make some chocolate chip cookies, listen, ladies, if you make chocolate chip cookies, you don't have to give anything in the offering, okay? Your husbands don't have to give anything in the offering. And if we get enough, what happens if we get too many? There's no such thing as too many chocolate chip cookies, right? No, I didn't think so, okay? My wife makes them in fast freeze, is that what you call it?
They're on flash freeze.
Flash freezes. So she unflash froze them, four of them. By the time I got home, he ate them all. So just next time we meet, bring chocolate chip cookies in. And if there's too many, I will help take care of the problem. But again, it's just going to save us a lot of money in the honorarium, okay? And today, I don't know if he was talking to me or if I had a dream, but he said, "I'd rather have cookies than money." And so, yeah, I clap for that too, alright? So keep that in mind, okay? And we'll just download him with chocolate chip cookies, alright? Father, it's good being in your house. I love being here, I love being with your people. I love hearing the singing, I love the preaching, I love the fellowship. And Father, I pray that we would allow the Spirit of God to do mighty work tonight. Each and every one of us have come and there are issues in all of our lives that need to be dealt with. And I pray, Father, that we would have a submissive and a humble heart to receive the Word of God and to apply it and make changes where you want us to make changes. And Father, that we would grow in the grace and knowledge of our Savior and that we would see grand and glorious things happen in the days that lie ahead. Thank you, Father, for meeting with us. Thank you for doing a great work even tonight. And we will praise you for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
As you're seated, we'll keep the theme of great as we sing. "Great is Thy faithfulness." Song number 28 in your songbooks. "Great is Thy faithfulness, O God my Father; There is no shadow of turning with Thee." Song number 28, and we'll start on that first verse. "Great is Thy faithfulness, O God my Father; There is no shadow of turning with Thee; Thou changest not, Thy compassions they fail not; As Thou hast been, Thou forever wilt be. Great is Thy faithfulness, great is Thy faithfulness; Morning by morning new mercies I see; All I have needed Thy hand hath provided. Great is Thy faithfulness, Lord unto me; On the last pardon for sin and a peace that endureth, Thy oh dear presence to cheer and to guide; Strengths for today and bright hope for tomorrow; Blessings all mine with ten thousand beside. Great is Thy faithfulness, great is Thy faithfulness; Morning by morning new mercies I see; All I have needed Thy hand hath provided. Great is Thy faithfulness, Lord unto me." Amen, great singing. The one and only announcement I have is there is the youth night this Friday. It's still our normal meeting that we would have, so adults please on come. But afterwards, there'll be an afterglow type service, food and fellowship for all the teenagers in attendance. I've sent invites out to other local youth groups. And I've also encouraged you all to invite some of your friends and neighbors and such. But if you attend our church, don't assume that we're already automatically counting you. Have your parents get the link from me so you can register online so we can plan accordingly for how many teenagers we're going to have this Friday. Thank you.
I have one announcement. Be here tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, alright? Look around right now, and who normally sits by you, if they're not here, when you get home tonight, call them and say, "Hey, listen, we missed you." Alright, I'm looking out and I see several folks that we need to call. And some of them might have even forgot their special meetings, okay? I don't know how they do that, but that's possible, alright? So look around, make a mental note or write it down if you have to. And call some folks, you say, "Well, what happens if somebody else calls them?" Wouldn't that be great if somebody got seven phone calls, say, "Hey, we missed you," alright? So just have at it, and let's go get some folks. And then think and pray about who the Lord would have you invite that's brand new. Okay, so keep that in mind also if you will, alright? I think that's all the way of announcements I have. You want to do something? Yeah, I did. So it's your turn, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, alright.
Tag on it, here we go. Alright, so Junior Church for Special Meetings is three-year-olds to second grade. Three-year-olds to second grade, so if you fit that criteria, Mrs. Luna is right there in the back. She is your teacher for tonight. And so, I don't see Marie moving. Marie, three-year-olds, I'm kidding, anyways, moving on. Alright, so there they get going, wiggling away. And then they will be in the train room for their class parents. Remember to pick them up there at the conclusion of the service. So as they get going, we're going to spend some time just shaking hands, greeting one another, and saying hello while the piano plays. As you find your seats, remain standing and go to song number 53. Song 53, we've sang "How Great Thou Art," we've sang "Great is Thy Faithfulness." Song number 53, "Our Great Savior." Song 53, and we'll sing on the first. "Jesus, what a friend for sinners! Jesus, lover of my soul! Friends may fail me, foes assail me; He, my Savior, makes me whole. Hallelujah, what a Savior! Hallelujah, what a friend! Saving, helping, keeping, loving; He is with me to the end." And on the fourth, "Jesus, what a guide and keeper! While the tempest still is high, Storms about me night or takes me; He, my pilot, hears my cry. Hallelujah, what a Savior! Hallelujah, what a friend! Saving, helping, keeping, loving; He is with me to the end." And on that last, "Jesus, I do now receive Him; More than all in Him I find; He hath granted me forgiveness; I am His and He is mine. Hallelujah, what a Savior! Hallelujah, what a friend! Saving, helping, keeping, loving; He is with me to the end." Amen.
We'll have a word prayer, then a special, and then Brother Hightower, it's all yours, alright? Father, please, may we yield our spirits, our hearts, our desires, our plans, to the Word of God tonight. Father, I pray that we would have sensitive spirits. Lord, each and every one of us needs something. And I'm so thankful that through the Word of God and the Spirit of God, every need can be met. And we pray that we would yield ourselves to that goal. And we'll thank you for what you accomplished tonight, for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
"When the race still lies before me, And the wind is blowing strong; When the witnesses surround me And my strength is almost gone; When the valley plunges deeper And life shatters all my dreams; Then I lift my voice to Jesus And He gives my spirit wings. God gives wings as He goes. God gives wings to fly and strength to rise above. God gives wings as He goes. When my feet begin to stumble And my dreams begin to crumble; I mount up on eagle's wings. Let us run the race with patience; Let us lay each weight aside; Looking only unto Jesus, He will be our faithful guide. He has run the race before us; He has won the victor's crown; And He calls to every Christian, 'Follow Me to higher ground.' God gives wings as He goes. God gives wings to fly and strength to rise above. God gives wings as He goes. When my feet begin to stumble And my dreams begin to crumble; I mount up on eagle's wings. When my feet begin to stumble And my dreams begin to crumble; I mount up on eagle's wings."
Amen, thank you for that, guys. Open your Bibles with me tonight to the book of Judges, Judges chapter 3. While you're turning there, Pastor, you did something tonight I have never seen happen before. And I've done more than 500 revival meetings, and I never had the pastor do a commercial for chocolate chip cookies. Never. And tell lies while he's doing it, it's just, it's amazing, amazing. We do need revival. I do like chocolate chip cookies. I think, I've done a little research, this has nothing to do with my sermon, I've done a little research, that manna that came from heaven for the children of, if you check the Hebrew, it means chocolate chip cookies. Yeah, it's just, it's the way it is. I want to preach tonight about a fairly unknown character in the Bible. We don't know anything about his parents, his grandparents, don't know where he came from, don't know much of anything, and there's only one verse about him in the whole Bible. And yet, the man did an amazing work for God. So let's read the very last verse, verse number 31, of the book of Judges, chapter number 3. The Bible says, "And after him," that's after Ehud. Ehud was the judge, if you remember, he was left-handed, and he did battle with the king of Moab. His name was Eglon. You can remember that because Eglon was egg-shaped. He was a chubby fella, and Ehud killed him. And as a result, Israel had some peace. And after him, the Bible says, was Shamgar, the son of Anath, which slew of the Philistines six hundred men with an ox goat. Wow. He didn't use a sword, he didn't use a spear, he didn't use a bow and arrow, he didn't even use a sling with a rock. He killed six hundred Philistines with an ox goat. And he also, he also delivered Israel. Father, I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I thank you for the Word of God, that it's inspired, it's preserved, but it's a living word. And from it, we can learn not only how to be saved, but how to live after we get saved. God, I ask your blessing on this service tonight, in Jesus' name, amen. Before we learn about Shamgar, we learned about Ehud. After we learned about Shamgar, we learn about Deborah and Beirac. And the Bible devotes a good number of verses to these leaders. And yet, to Shamgar, we get one verse, very little explanation. As I mentioned, we don't know where he came from. Other than one person mentioned, we don't know anybody in his lineage. We don't even know if he's a judge. The Bible doesn't tell us that he was a judge, but he did live in a time when the Bible says there was no king in Israel, and every man did that which is right in his own eyes. My guess is, he was a farmer. And the Bible doesn't tell us he had fields or crops, but it tells us that one day, he was attacked by six hundred Philistines. By the way, that's a whole bunch. And he defeated six hundred Philistines with an ox goat. The reason I think he's a farmer is because I don't know who else would have an ox goat. An ox goat, now if I'm preaching back home, we live in a suburb of Detroit, and you read about an ox goat, nobody knows what an ox goat is. Nobody there grew up on a farm, nobody knows what a plow is. It's like the mission field, okay? But if you're familiar with agriculture, if you're familiar with plowing, you probably know a little bit about an ox goat. Before they had tractors, they plowed their fields with oxen. And oxen are second cousins to mules. They're stubborn, they do what they want to do, they're kind of like teenagers. And so, the farmer would plow, he'd have his oxen, usually it was a yoke of two, and he'd plow behind the oxen, preparing his field for planting. But if the oxen decided they didn't want to go anymore, they'd just stop. Well, he had a long stick, think of like the handle on a shovel or the handle on a broom, only maybe twice that long. And it had a sharp point on the end. And he would just take that pointed end and poke the oxen. Now, no matter how stubborn you are, if you get poked in the hind end with a sharp stick, you're going to move. And so, this man had an ox goat, it was handy. He didn't have to look for it, he didn't have to wonder where it was. But when the enemy came, they, six hundred of them, they, 600 of them, attacked him. Now, understand, if you're going to attack somebody as an invading soldier or an invading person from another country, most likely, you've been trained for warfare. And so, it's not a stretch to assume that these Philistines were Philistine soldiers. They were coming to destroy the leadership in this part of the country so that the Philistines could begin to rule. That's the very same reason that Goliath brought the armies of the Philistines in battle against Saul a little later on. But now, you have a smaller band, 600 men against one farmer with a pointy stick. Not good odds. If I was the farmer with a pointy stick and 600 Philistines came, I'm pretty sure I'd give up. But the Bible, it's such an amazing story because God, matter-of-factly, just tells us that He killed 600 Philistines with an ox goat. Consider Shamgar, probably untrained militarily. He undoubtedly was farming property that belonged to his father and had belonged to his father that was given by God when the children of Israel had come out of Egypt. Because the Bible tells us that when the land was divided, God told them that they weren't allowed to sell the land. They just, it just passed from family to family to family. And so, he's on his family's property that he probably has inherited, but he's not been trained as a fighting soldier. There's nothing that he has around the house to do battle with. He doesn't have a sword, or he would have used it. He doesn't have a spear, or he would have used it. Doesn't have a bow or an arrow. Nothing there but a stick with a point on the end. And so, he, from our point of view, he was unprepared. I'm guessing he was all by himself. Possibly, he was married. Maybe he had some little children. But it doesn't tell us that Shamgar and his friend fought the battle. Doesn't tell us that Shamgar and his neighbors fought the battle. It was Shamgar by himself. You know, friends are a blessing, are they not? Isn't it great to have somebody to pray for you when you're going through a difficult time? Isn't it a blessing to have somebody to encourage you? But there comes a time, sometimes, when we just have to stand alone. And so, Shamgar, with no encouragement, with no help. I remember when I was youth director, you'd plan this activity and get all excited about, you know, kind of like youth afterglow after the Friday night service. And you'd be all excited. And you say to the teenagers, "Are you going to come?" And you'd hear them whisper to their friend, "Are you coming? Are you coming?" Who cares if they're coming? Of course, they're coming. Everybody's coming, right? Nobody came to the battle. He was all by himself. And so, when the Philistines came to do battle, I'm not, I really want that when we get to heaven, we have instant replay. I would like to see how God does. I want to see David hit Goliath in the head. But even more so, I want to see him chop his head off. Yeah. I want to see the look on those prophets of Baal when Elijah prays and fire comes down from heaven and burns up that side. Yeah, I want to see that. But I also want to see Shamgar pick up his ox goat and go to battle. Consider, consider the weapon. First of all, it was convenient. It was right there. He didn't, as I mentioned before, he didn't have to look for it. He didn't have to wonder where it was. Half of my life is spent asking Karen if she knows where I left stuff. "Karen, do you know where my belt is? Karen, have you seen my keys? Karen, did you move?" That's my favorite. "Did you move my Bible?" He knew right where it was. It was there. It was available. He might have been using it when the Philistines invaded. But it was convenient. It was also a tool he was familiar with. He had handled that ox goat numerous times. Numerous fields he had to plow. Numerous times, the oxen were stubborn. And so, he knew how to use that ox goat. And when the Philistines came, he wasn't unfamiliar with it. He used it. But it was so unusual. There is nobody else in the Bible who ever killed even one person with an ox goat. And yet, you and I understand that a farmer, no matter how many push-ups and sit-ups he's able to do, no matter how much weight he can lift on the bench press, one man against 600 is not going to win the battle unless God helps him. It's unspoken in the story that God helps him. But we all understand that this is a man who had a great victory, but the victory wasn't necessarily his. It was God's. Several times throughout the Bible, we learn that the battle is the Lord's. The battle is the Lord's. But what I want to focus on tonight is the fact that the man against overwhelming odds did right and was victorious. And the Bible says, "He delivered Israel." His actions affected the entire nation. Shamgar, with a stick that has a point on the end, saved his nation. You know, you and I are in a battle. We are. The Bible teaches that the devil is trying to destroy us. You know, there really is a devil? You have this picture in your head of a guy in a red suit with a pitchfork, has horns and a long tail. That's not the devil. Peter tells us that our adversary, the devil, "As a roaring lion walketh about, seeking whom he may devour." Read the book of Job. Job comes before the Lord, and God says, "Has thou considered my servant Job, an upright man, one that feareth God and astueth evil?" You know, that's a pretty good testimony when God brags about you. And the devil says, "Well, of course, he loves you. Look how you've blessed him. You've made him one of the wealthiest men in the world. He has 10 wonderful children. His wife is an encouragement to him. He's healthy and well." He said, "Let me at him, and he'll curse you." Do you suppose Job is unique in that the devil wanted to keep him from serving God? I don't think so. Understand this. The devil has, and I realize that sometimes, it's not the devil, but it's the fruits of the devil, the sin. But my point is, he wants to ruin your life. He wants to destroy your testimony. The devil has an arsenal of weapons that he uses against you and me. And yet, the Bible tells us, "Greater is he that's in us than he that's in the world." The devil cannot defeat us unless we give him permission. And we often give him permission. And so, we see there's a great battle in this story with Shamgar. But you and I fight a battle against the Lord, or I'm sorry, against the devil, the Lord of darkness, every day. Every day, the devil is trying to destroy your testimony. Every day, he's trying to get you to ruin your Christian walk with God. Every day, he's trying to destroy your family. Every day, the devil would do whatever he could to destroy this church. The devil is against the people and the purposes of God. We need to understand that. He is our enemy. Shamgar had an enemy. And I can almost see him doing this. Holding his stick in one hand and with the other saying, "Come on, boys. Come on, boys." I would imagine his thought was, "I'm probably not going to get them all. I don't know how many I'll get, but I promise you this, I'll get some." And every single day, the devil is trying to destroy everything in our life that's good. Everything in our life that's godly. And so, we have a battle. We battle against the devil. We battle against our own flesh, the temptations that we have. We battle against our attitudes. We battle against our actions. We are in a spiritual war. But we have weapons. Shamgar had an ox goat. We have weapons to do battle. God has promised us that if we'll ask, He'll hear and He'll answer. We can use prayer as a weapon in our life. You know God answers prayer? He does. He does. I've been preaching here for a lot of years, and so, you probably have heard some of my stories. But I like them, so I'm going to tell another one that you probably heard. I was the first one in my family that got saved. I was 17, God called me to preach. I went to college to prepare for the ministry. And when I was in college, I just realized, I mean, I knew it, but I knew it here, but it didn't hit me here. You know what I'm talking about? Yeah. I'm thinking, my family's not saved. My mom and dad, if they die, they're going to hell. All my friends are going to hell. And so, I learned how to be a soul winner. I had a roommate who was such a help to me spiritually. And he taught me how to lead somebody to Christ. And I asked everybody that I knew, "Pray for me at Christmas time. When I go home, I want to talk to my mom and dad. I want them to get saved." And so, mom and dad picked me up at the airport in Salt Lake City, Utah. It's about two and a half hours from our house. And as soon as we left the airport, I said, "Mom, let me tell you how you can know for sure you're going to heaven." And she said, "Stop! We knew this was going to happen. We knew you were going to come home and preach to us. We don't want to hear about your religion. Keep it to yourself." I said, "Mom, I'm not trying to talk to you about religion. I just want to tell you how you can have your sins forgiven." And my dad goes, "Stop! You are not ruining our Christmas. Just because you want to be a religious fanatic doesn't mean the rest of us do. And if you have a problem with that, let me know. I'll turn the car around. You go back to the airport." Why wouldn't anybody want to hear about gospel? Why wouldn't anybody want to get saved? So all during Christmas vacation, I tried to bring it up. I tried to say stuff. They didn't, they didn't want to hear it. They didn't want to hear it. I was so discouraged. I got back to school, and the guys who'd been praying said, "Did your mom and dad get saved?" Nah, they wouldn't even listen. Oh, that's too bad. And I learned how to pray a little bit. And I went down to the stairwell. I lived on the third floor. And I got in the stairwell because nobody used the stairwell at the end of the hall. And so, I started praying. And I said, "Lord, here I've given you my life to be in ministry, and my own parents won't even listen. God, what's going on?" And while I was praying, the Lord laid a wonderful thought on my heart. I was convicted at the time. But God said this to me. God doesn't talk to me out loud. He doesn't talk to you out loud. If anybody says God talked to them out loud, they're lying to you, okay? Nobody, God doesn't do that. But the Lord impressed my heart with this thought. "If they ever get saved, it's going to be me. It's not going to be you." Man, I was so convicted. I thought, man, here, because I learned how to be a soul winner, they're going to listen, they're going to get saved. And I said, "God, I'm sorry." I said, "I know that it's you." And so, because of that, I'm going to pray every day for them to get saved because I know, I know that you promised to answer prayer. So help me to be faithful. I'm going to pray for them every day. I'm going to live a good testimony so they don't use my life as an excuse not to get saved. And God, every chance I have, I'll try to witness to them. But Lord, I'm trusting you to save them. When I graduated, the fellow that had led me to the Lord asked me if I'd come preach on a Sunday night. And I said, "Sure, I will. I'd love to." I said, "Would it be okay if I preached on salvation? I think maybe I could get my parents to come." My parents had never been to church. Never listened to me witness to them. And he goes, "That'd be wonderful." And so, mom and dad came on that Sunday night. Man, I just zeroed in. I don't do this anymore, but I had somebody in mind. I put the crosshairs right on my dad. And I preached the gospel as clearly as I possibly could. I gave the invitation, and nothing happened. Got in the car, we're headed home. I want to talk to them about the Lord. I said, "What'd you think of the message?" My mom goes, "You're awful loud." My dad said, "I didn't know it'd be that long. I would never come." And I'm thinking, they're never going to get saved. But I kept praying. And I kept praying. And I kept praying. Jeremiah was born, and he was the only grandchild. And so, him and my dad became buddies. And we'd call every Sunday night after church. Jeremiah get on the phone, talking to my dad. He'd say, "Hi, Grandpa." And my dad called him Poncho. He goes, "Hi, Poncho." He goes, "What'd you do today, Grandpa?" He goes, "Oh, nothing. I went to Sunday School." "Oh, that's good. Grandpa, did you go to Sunday School?" "Uh, here's your grandma." And I kept praying. And I kept praying. And I kept praying. We were out visiting them. I was up early, and my mom's up. She said, "I didn't sleep very well last night. How come?" She goes, "Oh, Hal, you know why." "Mom, I don't know. Why didn't you sleep well?" She said, "Am I a Christian?" I said, "Mom, I don't know if you are or not, but I can get my Bible and show you how you can know for sure." She said, "Would you?" And I ran the bedroom. I got my Bible. We came back and sat on the couch. I was crying, my mom was crying. We're going through the plan of salvation. And my mom got saved. My dad's still asleep, right? She runs in the bedroom. She shakes the bed, and she goes, "Hey, hey, I just got saved." And my dad goes, "Oh, no." And less than two months later, my dad got saved. You want me to tell you why they got saved? I'm convinced in my heart this is why they got saved. They didn't get saved because I had some great gospel presentation. They didn't get saved because they heard a sermon that they just couldn't argue with. I'm convinced they got saved because I might have missed five days. I might have missed five days. But I prayed for them every single day for 17 years. Prayer's a mighty weapon. But you have to use it. You have, I, I'm not trying to be accusatory or unkind at all. But some of you have unsaved loved ones you're burdened about, and you haven't prayed 17 days in a row for them. Shamgar took his business seriously. There were 600 Philistines, and they were gonna be destroyed. If my mom and dad didn't get saved, they were gonna go to hell. It was a big deal. I had a tool. I had a weapon. I had prayer. Tell you another weapon that you have: your testimony. Your testimony. You can, you can have the most logical, well illustrated arguments in the world, and they won't have a bit of effect. But listen carefully. They can never argue with your testimony. There is no argument or explanation for a faithful, consistent testimony other than the fact that what a wonderful change in my life has been wrought since Jesus came into my heart. I told you about my promise to God that I'd pray for them. I'd try to live the best testimony I could. Years after they got saved, got a birthday card from my mom. Parents always say the same thing to their adult children. "Happy birthday. We love you. You still owe us that money you borrowed." And then down at the bottom, my mom wrote, "There's no way we could ever thank you for not only telling us, but showing us how to be a Christian." Shamgar had a pointy stick. You have a testimony. Recognize that you can witness for 100 days and mess up your testimony one day, and it's gone for a long time. We're fighting a serious battle. And God has given us some tools. God has given us some, some weapons that, that might to the world be unconventional. They don't, they don't get it. They don't understand it. But God answers prayer. God uses our testimony. You know what another weapon we have is the Scripture, the Word of God. There are times when your life's just crumbling. The circumstances, the burden is so heavy. And you don't know where to go and what to do. And you're just wondering, "God, what do I do now?" The answer's in the book. Let me say that again. The answer is in the book. Sometimes, I, I, I'll be talking with a couple. And, and usually, it's the man who says, "Well, I don't know my Bible like I ought to, but..." If you don't know it like you ought to, learn it! Learn it! I'm gonna try that again. Learn it! It's, it's not that hard. I know, it takes time. How many of you are old enough to remember cassette tapes? Yeah. You young people, you probably saw them in a museum. Okay. We, one, one year, we gave away the Bible on cassette. Alexander Skorby reading them. Now, you're familiar with those? Well, I got, I got curious. I wonder how long it takes Alexander Skorby to read the entire Bible out loud? Well, I looked at the cassette tapes, and it said, "Tape 1, Side A, told you how many minutes." Flipped it over, Side B, told you how many minutes. I wrote it down. I got all the minutes that it takes to read the whole Bible. I said, "Karen, add these up." You know how long it takes to read the entire Bible out loud? 72 hours and 24 minutes. 72 hours and 24 minutes? And you tell me you don't have time to read your Bible? You know what's happened? You got your ox goat in the barn. And when you need it, you can't find it. And you don't know what to do. God has given us some wonderful weapons to fight our battles. And our, our enemies are great, but the battle is the Lord's. Our weapons are simple to use. Anybody can pray. You don't have to have a degree from a theological seminary to pray. God asks us to pray, and He answers our prayers when we do pray. Anyone can read the Bible and apply scriptures. It's our guide. It's our guard. We can do... Anyone can stand for right and have a good testimony? I don't know anything about Shamgar other than what one verse tells me. But from that, I can learn this. Anybody can be used of God. Anybody can be used of God. He was a guy going about his daily activities when all of a sudden, the situation presented itself for him to do something mighty. At the time, he didn't think it was mighty. It was just pure survival. But with the power of God, God blessed him, and he delivered Israel. Look, every one of us. "Yeah, but you don't know about my background." Doesn't matter. God knows, and He's forgiven you. "Yeah, but, but, but I'm just not able..." Yes, you are. "I can do all things through Christ, who strengtheneth me." Our excuses are gone. If a farmer can beat 600 trained soldiers with a sharp stick, what could we do for God? Let's get serious. Every head bowed, every eye closed. "Thank you, Lord." I love this story because it just reminds me that you, you don't have favorites. There aren't those that you choose because of ability or talent. It's just folks who are willing to be available. So, God, I pray tonight, as we consider, I, I would imagine there's some heavy burdens in the hearts of those who are here tonight. Lord, I would imagine there's some struggles going on. I don't know what's happening in families with children and grandchildren, and maybe even spouses. But I know that the devil's fighting hard to discourage and to destroy. But I also know that we can do all things through Jesus. So bless tonight. God, I pray that you would encourage the discouraged. I pray that you'd give strength to the weak. I pray that you'd give a sense of purpose to those who are just wandering. Lord, help us to use the weapons that we have. Your eyes closed and wondered tonight, how many would say, you know, "I needed that message. My prayer life's not what it ought to be. And God's dealing with me about that. I'm not the soul winner that I want to be. And boy, my testimony has been horrible. And there are other things that I could do and I should do. And God's speaking to my heart. Pray for me tonight. Pray that, that, that I would be the Christian God wants me to be. Pray that I could win my battles against the devil in my own flesh. Pray that my life would be one that causes others to be blessed." Lord spoke to my heart tonight. I, I want you to pray for them. Let me do that. Raise your hand, please. Hold it up high. Yeah, all over the room. Thank you. You can put your hands down. Let's stand. I'm gonna pray for you like I promised. And then I'm gonna encourage you to make your way to the altar. Well, I don't really do that at the altar. Yeah, it, it's time to pick up your ox goat and move out of the barn. Father, bless every single person whose hand was raised. Be with us in this invitation time. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Come quickly. Don't wait. Just come.
Tomorrow night, 7 o'clock. Go home, use your ox goat, telephone, call people. Get them here tomorrow night. Father, thank you. For tender hearts, thank you for the power of your word. And Lord, I pray that we would see wonderful things transpire in the days that lie ahead because we've decided we're gonna use our ox goat for your honor and your glory. Help us to be efficient for you. Amen. God bless you. You are dismissed.